I got the word accidentally. Is that? If you told us.
That's good. That's good. There's one exception to that. All right. All right. Rule 19. Very good. And John and Ken were showing me their annotated books from last year. That is very good. Rule 19 deals with the ball in motion, deflected or stopped. And I think it's helpful if, as Ken and John did, they said, as I suggested they do, in the title, to insert the word accidentally before deflected. There was one exception in that the note to Rule 19-1 tells us what to do with a deflection by an outside agency. The other parts of this rule deal with accidental deflections. And part of the reason for that is remember, Rule 1-2 covers intentional deflections of the ball in motion. So this rule has, as we mentioned, has a parallel structure to Rule 18. Rule 18 dealt with the ball in motion. This rule deals with the ball, or Rule 18 dealt with the ball at rest. Rule 19 deals with the ball in motion. So Rule 19-1. If a player's ball in motion is accidentally deflected or stopped by an outside agency, it's a rub of the green, there's no penalty, and the ball is played as it lies. So there can be all sorts of variations of that. Player's tee shot hits a spectator. Whether it's a good break or bad break, the player plays the ball from wherever it winds up. Player's ball hits a sprinkler head. You know, sprinkler head's an obstruction, also an outside agency. Good luck or bad luck, the player will play the ball wherever it winds up. And there are exceptions to that in terms of playing the ball from where it winds up. Rule 1. If the ball comes to rest in or on a moving or animate outside agency, if it's through the green or in a hazard, the ball must be dropped on the putting green placed as nearest possible to the spot directly under the place where the ball came to rest in or on an outside agency, but not near the hole. So as Ken said, with Tiger's case yesterday, what it sounds like his ball may have come to rest in the lap of a spectator, but the spectator is an outside agency, so this rule would apply. So Tiger would lift the ball and drop it as near as possible to where the spectator was when the ball came to rest in on him. Second part B is something that probably receives more attention than it should, given how unlikely it is for it to happen, but it's something that still we need to know that it's there just in case, this provision. If the player's ball in motion after a stroke on the putting green is deflected or stopped by a moving or animate outside agency, except for one or the like, the stroke is canceled, the ball must be replaced and replayed. So first, this provision applies only to a stroke from the putting green, and it applies to a situation where the ball has been deflected by a moving or an animate outside agency. So example, an example of a moving outside agency would say the leaf that's being blown across the green, or a pine cone off the tree. An animate outside agency would be, say, another player, a dog, a bird, a squirrel, as I think almost happened with Nick Faldo in the 2001 U.S. Open. So if any of that happens, the player does not have a choice in the matter. He must cancel and replay the stroke.
Just a question. Wasn't that something about Phil Mickelson, where he putted and then it landed, wasn't moving? So the fact that he hit it didn't matter? If it was moving, he could have reputted.
Yeah, something came up with Mickelson in the last few years. What was it? Was it a leaf blew and came to rest on his line?
He putted, it came in, it landed. After he putted, it landed, and he hit it. And I think it was like one of those little.
Oh, okay.
But it was stacked.
Okay.
And so he couldn't.
Okay, okay. Yeah, in that case, Mickelson putted, and while his ball's in motion, a loose impediment landed and came to rest on his line of putt, but it was at rest when the ball struck and was deflected by it. In that case, since that outside agency was inanimate and at rest, he would, by default, play it as it lies, except the result. All right. The note to 19-1 tells us what to do. The ball has been deliberately deflected or stopped by an outside agency. So for example, if a spectator intentionally bats a ball back towards the green or away from the green, tells us what to do. And it is a little bit of a different, or very much a different procedure than we have throughout the rest of the rules. And it's information that used to be contained in a decision, but is now here in a more visible location. So after a stroke from anywhere other than on the putting green, the spot where the ball would have come to rest must be estimated. So where the spot where the ball would have come to rest. Obviously, that's a pretty big judgment right there. And if it's through the green, the ball, or in a hazard, the ball must be dropped at that spot and so forth. If it's clear that the ball would have gone out of bounds, then the player must proceed under the out of bounds rule and so forth. If this happens on the putting green, the ball must be replaced and replayed.
Can I tell if this rule was in place when Palmer was at his feet?
You know, that's an interesting.
I think Arnie's story was helpful a lot of times.
Yeah, and certainly, you know, you hear stories that with Arnie's Army, that Palmer, Harvey missed a fairway or a green as a result. And I'm not sure of the history of this. I would imagine in some form or another that it was. But there we go. And with a reminder at the bottom, if the outside agency is a fellow competitor or is caddie, then Rule 1-2 applies to the fellow competitor. But this information really needs to be contained here because, for example, if a spectator intentionally deflects a ball, Rule 1-2 can't apply to the spectator. You're not going to penalize the spectator two strokes. So it seems that this is the best location for this information. Now, 19-2. And this is, does a good job of emphasizing the difference and significance of the difference between an accidental deflection and an intentional deflection. If a player's ball is accidentally deflected or stopped by himself, his partner, either their caddies or equipment, the player incurs a penalty of one stroke, and that is in both match play and stroke play. The ball must be played as it lies unless it comes to rest in or on the person, clothes, or equipment, in which case the player must lift the ball and then drop it or place it as appropriate. So with that, key, let's say, in stroke play, if I intentionally stop my ball in motion, what's the ruling in stroke play? Two strokes. But if I hit a ball, hits the bunker face, comes back and strikes me accidentally, then it's a one-stroke penalty. So that's a case where we do need to know the difference between accidental and intentional. Rule 19-3. Match play. If a player's ball is accidentally deflected or stopped by an opponent, the opponent's caddie or equipment, there is no penalty, but the player has the option. He can either play the ball as it lies, or he can cancel and replay the stroke. So it's up to him what to do in that case. Rule 19-4. In stroke play, if the ball is accidentally deflected by a fellow competitor, well, that's the same provisions as Rule 19-1, if an outside agency applies. So we'll save ourselves almost a full page of text and just refer to that rule. Then 19-5 is a little more involved. And remember, we talked about under Rule 18-5, what to do if a ball at best is moved by another ball in motion after a stroke, that the moved ball has to be replaced. Let's talk about what to do with the ball that was in motion. The player's ball in motion after a stroke is deflected or stopped by a ball in play and at rest, player must play his ball as it lies. So that's the first thing. Play the ball as it lies. Match play, there is no penalty. In stroke play, there's no penalty unless both balls originally were on the putting green prior to the stroke, in which case the player who putted incurs a penalty of two strokes. So let's walk through some examples of that. Let's say Phil and I are playing together in match play. Both our balls are on the putting green. I'm 20 feet from the hole, and Phil is five feet from the hole. And I putt, and my ball strikes and moves Phil's ball. First question, what does Phil do? He has to replace his ball. No penalty to him. Is there any penalty to me in match play? Because it's match play, there's no penalty, and I will play my ball where it winds up. Now, same situation, but in stroke play. I'm 20 feet away, Phil's five feet. We're both on the green. I putt. My ball strikes and moves Phil's. So Phil will still replace his ball. No penalty to Phil. I will still play my ball as it lies, but with a two-stroke penalty. So why the distinction? Why is there a penalty in stroke play, but not in match play? The difference is, it gets back to the root difference between the two forms of play. Is in match play, let's say, for example, Phil's ball was two feet beyond the hole in a position where it could have assisted me if I hit my putt too hard. Phil has every right to lift his ball, both under Rule 16, because his ball is on the putting green, but also under Rule 22, if he thinks it might assist me. And if he's asleep and doesn't really notice that his ball could assist me, and it winds up assisting me, then he has himself to blame. So it seems reasonable for there to be no penalty, no explicit penalty in that case. There might be a consequence that Phil might not like, and that my ball was stopped from going past the hole. But in stroke play, though, where we're competing against, let's say, 100 other people, though Doug, sitting next to Phil, might be annoyed that I got a good break because Phil wasn't paying attention. So by penalizing me, this makes it in my interest to have Phil lift his ball, so that it's not going to assist me with my play. And this really helps avoid some situations with Rule 22 that we'll get to later about green to leave a ball in a position to assist each other and so on and so forth, because that penalty now makes it in my own interest to have Phil lift his ball. And in so doing, that protects all the other players in the field from that.
John, is there a, I understand the distinction. Is there a trick that you use, or have used, or taught, to help you remember the distinction between the penalty situations in match play versus stroke play in 19-5?
Are you meaning in that particular case? I guess I've just always just known match play, no penalty, stroke play, penalty. But I think if you try, if you think philosophically about the two forms of play, I think that can help.
That can help, yeah.
And also, with stroke play, it's important to remember that there's the penalty only if both balls were on the green, where there's still the gray area of if my ball's just on the fringe and you leave your ball two feet beyond the hole and.
That's no different than somebody hitting from the fairway and your ball's on the green. I mean, you couldn't penalize somebody for that.
All right. So that's the one balls, when a ball in motion strikes, ball at rest. Now, what happens when a ball in motion strikes another ball in motion? All right. Other than on the putting green, if that happens, you have two balls collide. The player must play his ball as it lies without penalty. So on the fourth fairway, if I hit a shot and a ball from the fifth fairway comes over and hits my ball midair, then we both play our balls as they lie. On the putting green, it's different, that if this happens after a stroke from the putting green, whether it's a case from someone else in your group playing, or a ball from another hole, the player's stroke is canceled, and the ball must be replaced and replayed without penalty. Penalty for breach of Rule 19 for any section is loss of hole or two strokes. So as we've said, it's a good exercise, anytime you come to a penalty statement, to go back through that rule and think, okay, how could a player incur the general penalty under that rule? And let's say, for example, under Rule 19-1, if a player hits his ball through the green, it comes to rest on a spectator's lap, instead of dropping the ball as near as possible under the place where the ball was, the player places the ball. Player would be in breach of Rule 19-1A. So in stroke play, would incur two penalty strokes. That's one example. Now, let's go through some decisions. 19-1/3 is useful because it has, the principle of it has other applications. It really applies to any situation when a player is required to cancel and replay a stroke, and he does not do so. So to look at these specific facts. In stroke play, a competitor putts, and his ball is deflected by a moving outside agency. A competitor did not replay the stroke as required by the Rule 19-1B. He holes out and then plays from the next tee. What is the ruling? Well, first point is that if, when the player's ball was deflected by a moving outside agency, that stroke is canceled. It's a fact. It doesn't require any action by the player. That stroke automatically is canceled. So what we say the answer is, the stroke that was deflected does not count in the competitor's score. When he failed to replay the stroke, he played from the wrong place. So let's say he had putted from 20 feet from the hole, then after the deflection, he putted from five feet from the hole. So he played from the wrong place. He should have played from 20 feet, instead he played from five feet. So he's played from the wrong place. If the breach was a serious one, in this case, it's not going to be, you know, where the question is, has he gained a significant advantage? He should have played from 20 feet, instead he played from three or four feet, you know, probably a pretty good chance that is a serious, significant advantage. So in which case, in stroke play, he could be disqualified. Let's say it's not a serious breach. Let's say he was 10 feet in the hole, he putts, ball's deflected by a moving outside agency, and the ball comes to rest eight feet from the hole. He putts from eight feet. And let's say, originally, he's putting for a 32. So he's lying one, playing two. Then from eight feet, let's say he holds the putt and goes on to the next, and tees off on the next hole. What would be his score for the hole? Let's say he has his original tee shot. The first putt does not count. So the putt from eight feet counts, and that goes in the hole. Then he'll add two penalty strokes. He played from the wrong place, because he should have played from 10 feet again, instead he played from eight feet. So his score would be four on the hole.
What if he signed his scorecard having counted the putt that you say didn't happen? But he counted it, played the next one.
Okay, so.
So he's gotten it for a while, and end up with a score that's going to be one stroke higher because he didn't reput.
Yeah, and that's an interesting question, Jim. Let's go through that. Because let's say, in that case, what the player is likely to do, he probably, if he hits his tee shot on, putts from 10 feet, ball's deflected, goes to eight feet, then he holds it from eight feet. He probably thinks he made three. You know, because he probably thought he was doing the right thing by playing from eight feet. So he probably assumed he was pursuing correctly. So if he returns the score for three, when really he made a four, then he's disqualified. But on the other hand, what if he thought he incurred a two-stroke penalty, he put down a score of five for the hole? And he returns a score of five, when in fact he made a four, and he's stuck with a five?
Well, and that could even happen. You know, guy makes a three before he tees off on the next hole. He tees off on the next hole. So he says, oh, by the way, you need to replace that ball. You need to add two. Okay, and made a three, add two, like I had a five.
Yeah, you're right. That's reasonable. Like we talked about with Davis Law at the Players Championship, what I think happened with him is he was one stroke off, that he counted as a stroke when he nudged the ball. So he added one, but instead he needed to add two for moving and failing to replace. And that's how his score went along. But anyway, the key with this decision is there are other situations in the rules and in local rules when a player is required to cancel and replay a stroke. For example, under 5-3, if the ball breaks into pieces, if you have the local rule for a ball striking elevated power line, things like that. You know, that don't happen every day, but just be aware that this, the principle of this decision has other applications. It's useful to know, especially that no matter what the player does, that that stroke is in fact canceled.
Cost him $96,000.
Okay. Let's see. I may have been getting lazy, but I didn't mark any other decisions to discuss, because a lot of Rule 19 is pretty straightforward without anything unusual. There are some decisions that get into the sequencing of things, if the ball strikes a K and goes out of bounds and so on and so forth, but that's pretty straightforward. Any questions about Rule 19? Okay. Well, what we'll do is we will not cover Rule 20. Rule 20 will be the first of the next section. But let's go, let's jump over it to Rule 21 and go over 21, 22, possibly even 23 in the remaining 50 minutes we have. Rule 21 deals with cleaning the ball. As we saw, for example, in Rule 16-1B, a number of rules make reference to cleaning the ball, as to when the player may clean the ball. And this rule states the general principle that you would argue makes those other references unnecessary, but it's overall become fairly straightforward, but you kind of have to look at it from a backwards perspective, that it's much easier to know when you may not clean the ball than when you may. Because there are really three, really four times you may not clean a ball that's in your hand, and any other time the ball is in your hand, you may clean it. Hence, two of these we've seen. We know the ball on putting green may be cleaned. Elsewhere, a ball may be cleaned when it's been lifted, except it's been lifted to see if it's unfit for play, if it's been lifted for identification, although the player is entitled to clean the ball to the extent necessary to identify it. Then, as we'll see in the next rule, if he has lifted the ball from somewhere other than on the putting green because it assists or interferes with play. And to that, I, you might just jot down Decision Number 20-1/0.7, which we'll talk about next session. And that gives the player a procedure to follow to lift the ball to determine the application of a rule, where, for example, he can't tell if his ball is embedded in the ground, or if it's in a burning animal hole, or something like that, that he may lift the ball to determine that, but when he lifts it, he's going to follow similar procedure as with Rule 5-3, lifting the ball to see if it's unfit for play, and then, among other things, may not clean the ball. So you might just jot that down, 20-1/0.7 in the margin there. If a player cleans his ball during play of the hole, except as provided in this rule, he incurs a penalty of one stroke. The ball, if lifted, must be replaced. If a player is required to replace a ball, fails to do so, he incurs the general penalty under the applicable rule, but no additional penalty under this rule. So for example, if a player lifts his ball to see if it's unfit for play, he cleans it, and he does not properly replace the ball, he's going to incur in stroke play just the total penalty of two strokes under Rule 5-3 and not three strokes. And it's very, it's quite rare that a player is penalized for cleaning the ball under Rule 21 and not under one of these other rules, because the other rules often will have their own penalty for cleaning the ball. But the best example was, say, in Decision 21-2, removing grass adhering to the ball. In other words, a time when you're cleaning the ball without having lifted it. Through the green, is it permissible to remove cut grass adhering to a ball? I know, as we saw with definition of loose impediments, while cut grass ordinarily is a loose impediment, it's not a loose impediment if it adheres to the ball. So by removing that cut grass, the player's considered to be cleaning the ball. So in both match play and stroke play, you incur one penalty stroke under Rule 21. And then, let's see, we touched on this earlier. Decision 21-3 comes up occasionally, and I think the answer is a good one, especially for referees to know. Player's asked to lift his ball because it interferes with play. He authorizes the caddie lift the ball, and the caddie throws the ball to the player and catches it. Does the act of throwing and catching the ball constitute cleaning it? Well, whether the ball is cleaned is a question of fact. The action stride could result in the ball being cleaned, and any doubt should be resolved against the player. So it could be that the ball was perfectly cleaned when the caddie lifted it, in which case, there's no penalty. But if the ball was cleaned through that act, through the act of throwing it to the player and the player catching it, if some mud or grass or whatever comes off the ball, if the ball is cleaned, the player's going to be penalized on one stroke. And as the decision says, and again, this is helpful for committees, because it can be a tough call, and any doubt should be resolved against the player. So a more common application of this principle is, say, if a player lifts, is asked to lift his ball in Rule 22, is it interferes with someone else's play, and while he's waiting to play, he puts the ball in his pocket, or he hands it to his caddie, and the caddie receives the ball in a towel. Well, putting the ball in your pocket could result in cleaning the ball, and if it does, there'd be a penalty stroke. And as a committee member, those can be tough questions to resolve.
Check his pocket.
I'll let you check his pocket, Tim. I don't think I'll do that.
Thanks.
All right. And we mentioned this in passing the other day, but it's a big enough point that it has its own decision, 21-5. A piece of mud adheres to a player's ball. The player lifts the ball under Rule, which does not commit cleaning. When he replaces the ball, maybe he places it facing another direction so the mud won't interfere between the club facing the ball. And the answer is yes, provided the ball's replaced on the spot. The one exception to that is the player may not put the, tee the ball in the mud, put the mud on the bottom of the tee, because then he's not considered to be replacing the ball to its original position because vertical distance matters as the location of the ball. So bottom line is, the rules makers have said, okay, a player might get a good break, but the rules just can't get into requiring players to replace balls in the same orientation. That's just being much too picky. Any questions on 21 there? All right, let's talk about 22, which is referenced in Rule 21. And Rule 22 is divided into two different subjects, and they are not treated identically. So therefore, it's helpful to look at them separately. First section deals with a ball assisting play. If a player considers that a ball might assist any other player, and there is a difference between assistance and interference, those are not interchangeable and they're not true to the same, but they might assist another player, he may lift the ball if it's his ball, or have another ball lifted. So let's say, for example, Ken, Bill, and I are playing together in stroke play. And I am chipping from just off the green, and Bill's ball, Bill just hit a good chip shot, a foot beyond the hole. And Ken looks at it and says, geez, you know, if John hits his chip shot too hard, his ball might strike Bill's, and John's ball might not go as far past the hole as it should. May Ken ask Bill to lift his ball? And the answer is yes, may. So that's an example of. So that's an example of asking someone else to lift his ball. So even though it wasn't Ken's ball, Ken can still ask Bill to lift it. The ball lifted under this rule must be replaced. The ball must not be cleaned unless it had been lifted on the putting green. And usually, when you have a situation with a ball assisting play, it's very, very rare for that situation not to be on the putting green. That you can dream up some scenarios where a ball not on the putting green might assist someone's play. For example, maybe I have a blind shot, and just so happens that Bill's ball lying on top of this hill gives me a good line. And if Ken says, gee, I want John to have that line, Bill, you know, go put a dime on your ball. You know, that's not very nice of Ken, but could he do that? Yes, he could. And he, when Bill lifts the ball, he would not be allowed to clean it. In stroke play, a player asked to lift his ball under this rule may play first rather than lift. And in stroke play, if the committee determines the competitors have agreed not to lift a ball that might assist any competitor, they are disqualified. All right, and this is important. This is similar to what we saw under rule ten dash two C, that in stroke play, if two players agree play out time for the purpose of giving one of them the advantage, they are disqualified. And this is different from rule one dash three, agreement to waive the rules. Because as we said with one dash three, in order to waive the rules, first you have to know the rules. And this is not the case here, that there's no standard of knowledge in this case. It's just really intent, with intent and agreement. If they agree not to lift the ball for the purpose of assisting another player, then they are both disqualified. Now, as in stroke play only. And as in match play, if my ball is lying near the hole and might serve as a backstop for Ken, and I don't lift it, then I just have myself to blame. In stroke play, a little bit like what we talked about with rule nineteen dash five A, they don't want that placed.
Well, I know we discussed this before, but you still see this, and I know that as a referee, I acted differently, but player plays his shot from off the green, we'll say, yeah, he does, plays him off the green, his ball comes to rest close to the hole, but not interfering with another player in stroke. And invariably, you see this on television, they don't go forward to mark their ball. It seems to me like if they're all doing it, that it's an agreement to waive the rule. I mean, it just looks that way.
Well, it certainly raises eyebrows, that when you see players at the tour level that are very, very good. Say, if I hit a bunker shot up two feet from the hole, and you're about to chip or whatever from off the green, that I don't rush there to lift the ball. Why is that? Is there some unspoken kind of understanding that, you know, we'll leave balls in position to help each other out? Or is it because I don't want to interfere with your play and distract you by walking all the way up there and lifting the ball and so forth? And it's difficult. It makes a lot of officials uneasy, it's safe to say, but unless there is a clear agreement between the players, even if, you know, they wink at each other, you go, okay, that's it, that's enough of an agreement, to say they should be disqualified. But if there's no interaction, unfortunately, there really isn't anything to do. And that really bothers some people. I mean, I guess I've made peace with it by saying, well, okay, so you get a lucky break every now and then. You know, what's bad? One of the principles of behind the rules is playing the course as you find it. If you happen to have a shot, shot with a backstop two feet behind the hole, you know, is that really a bad thing? Is that inconsistent with the rest of the rules?
Well, I, so this, and maybe I did the wrong thing, I guess that's what I want to know, but I was officiating the last group in the junior tournament a couple years ago, in Tacoma, and on the seventeenth, a whole player hit a bunker shot, and I stopped play and told him to go up and mark his ball. Was that a lie?
Were you out of line? I, I don't think so. And there's, there have certainly been a number of very good officials that have done something like that in similar circumstances. But it's, it's, it's close. It's, it's close whether that's, you can't say it's right or it's wrong, that middle area, gray area, whether it's appropriate. And it's, all I can say is you're far from being alone in doing that. And you're far, far, very far from being alone and being concerned with the issue.
I think sometimes two players are afraid that by doing so, they'll slow down play, and they do it for the purpose of trying to speed things up. Unbeknownst that it looks sketchy in someone's eyes.
Yeah, yeah, because I think, I think it is, I think there's something to that about pace of play, and you could also argue that when you get to the tour level, around the greens, you're not worried about your ball going three feet beyond the hole. More often than not, you're trying to hold a shot that you have, and you're not obsessing about something like that.
John, in any situation where he intervened, let's just say the kids just didn't understand the rules, and the kid thought it was okay to leave the ball there, and, and he's, and the other fellow says, you know, he's getting ready to play, the other fellow says, you want me to go mark play? He said, I don't know, you can leave it there at my open, not knowing, by virtue of the fact that he said that. And is that automatic disqualification? Or if Kenny said, no, that would be, you know, that would be a, if you do leave it there, that'd be a, that'd be a violation of the, of the rule. Can he undo, can Kenny undo it by intervening in that situation?
Well, it depends. Once they have a real agreement, then that's it. It can't be undone. But the question is, at what point is there an agreement? So let's say, Phil, for example, you and I are playing together. I hit a bunker shot out, and I go to lift it. You say, John, just leave it there, it might help me. Well, at that point, it's not yet an agreement, because I haven't yet agreed to what you said, because I might continue on. But then, if I stop and walk away, then you could say that, okay, now there's an agreement.
Right. Or if the kid would have said, can I leave it there to help him? That's not an agreement, that's just a question. And then he could interfere, obviously.
Yeah, yeah. And then there can be gray area where, and I think it's a reasonable gray area, I don't think it's a, a devious one, where if I say, Phil, you want me to lift that? And you're saying, no, it's okay. Where more often than not, you're just saying, it's not in my way. You know, it doesn't bother me, and, you know, it's, I'm ready to play. Yeah. All right, so that's twenty-two dash one. One point is, is the note in the introductory clause says that this may not be done while a ball is in motion. Now, twenty-two dash two, which probably comes up more often, dealing with a ball that interferes with play. The player considers that another ball, another ball might interfere with his play, with his play, he may have it lifted. So it's a much narrower focus. So with twenty-two dash one, remember, if a player considers that a ball might assist any other player. But now with twenty-two dash two, it's only talking about your own play and with another ball interfering with yours, with your play. So among our other things, that rule twenty-two dash two does not apply to your own ball in terms of determining whether it interferes with someone else's play. The owner of the other ball has to make the determination of whether there is interference. A ball lifted, lifted under this rule must be replaced, may not be cleaned. In stroke play, as in twenty-two dash one, a player required to lift may play first rather than lift. And then, note one clarifies what happens in a pretty, you know, in a reasonable situation, where let's say that Andy and I are playing together, and we both hit our tee shots into a little bowl, bowl through the green. Our balls are only six inches apart, and I get down there before him. And my ball is closer to the hole, and it's directly in front of his. So it's absolutely clear that it's, my ball's going to interfere with his play. So on my own, without many requests from Andy, I mark the position of and lift my ball, thinking I'm proceeding under this rule. What's the ruling in that case? In that case, I would get a one-stroke penalty on rule eighteen dash two A, because I have lifted my ball without authority. But rule twenty-two dash two does not authorize me to make the determination of whether my ball interferes with someone else's play. You know, I, and in some cases, like that extreme case I've painted with Andy, even though it's very clear that my, that he's going to want me to lift my ball, I need to wait and have him ask me to lift my ball. And penalty for breach of this rule is the general penalty. So let's see, how can we incur the general penalty under this rule? One, one example would be if you lift a ball under either section when another ball is in motion. Another would be if you don't properly replace a lifted ball, if you play from the wrong And with the decisions, pretty straightforward. Decision twenty-two slash seven touches a little bit on what Ken was saying earlier about twenty-two dash one. In stroke play, a competitor's ball is in a position to assist the play of a fellow competitor, and the competitor is in a position to lift his ball without delaying play. However, the competitor does not take any action to invoke the rule. Would a referee be justified in intervening in requesting the competitor to invoke the rule, protect himself and the rest of the field? And Ken, you'll be glad to know, the RNA and USGA says yes, that you were justified in doing that. And if the competitor were to object, there would be strong evidence in agreement not to lift the ball, in which case there could be a disqualification under rule twenty-two dash one.
John, if you're playing with a partner again, would you request your partner to leave the ball then?
Okay, that's a good question, is that we know that in stroke play, say, fellow competitors can't agree to do that. So the question is, in four-ball stroke, in four-ball stroke play, if just you and your partner were on the same side, can you two agree to do that? And the key in the answer is that no, because it, it just says, if the committee determines that competitors have agreed not to lift the ball, then, and it doesn't go into what that relationship is, as long as they're both competitors in stroke play, even if they're partners, that would be disqualification, which, which I think is, is, is good. Because you'd hate to have a case where, say, you have two players, really, two partners scheming to do this, hoping that the other two fellow, two, two players don't ask them to lift the ball. That's not, that's not quite right. Okay, anything else on rule twenty-two there?
So that would be true in also a case of a four-ball, match play as well, right?
Well, the key there, though, is the, is the last paragraph of twenty-two dash one applies only in stroke play. So that's, that's what's tricky. In match play, you know, deviousness is occasionally allowed, if not encouraged. So if Bill and I are playing against you and Ken, and, you know, and I'm sure Ken would be a tough opponent, you know, who knows what you two might be, might have in mind. Ken, I bet you don't lose many bets, is that right?
Well, I don't bet anymore.
Oh. I'll also go away, keep your record perfect. All right, any questions on rule twenty-two? All right, if not, what we'll do is we'll cover rule twenty-three to wrap things up. Another short rule. This rule deals with loose impediments. So remember the definition. Loose impediment is any, is a natural object, provided it's not extra-growing, solidly embedded, or adhering to the ball. And we've already covered much of this in other rules. For example, rule thirteen dash four, we saw that if a player's ball is in a hazard and a loose impediment is in the hazard, he may not touch or move that loose impediment. But elsewhere, the player may move the loose impediment, now provided the ball does not move. And there's an exception to that for the putting green. So, for example, through the green, if you hit your ball near a leaf, you may remove the leaf, but there, there is some risk when you do so, because if you, if it caused the ball to move, it's a one-stroke penalty under rule eighteen dash two A, and the ball must be replaced. On the putting green, though, the player is given some leeway, because he is allowed to lift the ball anyway from the putting green. If the ball or ball marker has moved in the process of removing a loose impediment, the ball or ball marker must be replaced, and there's no penalty as long as the movement was directly attributable to removal of the loose impediment. And then, to touch with, go hand in hand with what we've seen in some other rules today, such as sixteen dash one B, and seventeen dash one, seventeen dash two, and then in twenty-two, now, when a ball's in motion, a loose impediment that might influence the movement of the ball must not be removed. So let's look at a few decisions under this rule. I think we mentioned this earlier when we talked about definitions, but one that at first seems contrary to the definition, but is in fact correct, is twenty-three slash five regarding an anthill. That we know that sand and loose soil are loose impediments only when they are located on a putting green, and often an anthill is composed of sand or loose soil. But even though, even when that is, that anthill is not on a putting green, that's still considered to be a loose impediment, and therefore, as long as it's not in a hazard, may be removed. And since they're playing in Phoenix this week, we should mention decision twenty-three dash one slash three. May spectators, caddies, fellow competitors, et cetera, assist a player in removing a large loose impediment? The answer is yes, that I think most, if not all, of us remember when Tiger took advantage of that in Phoenix in nineteen ninety. And what's interesting with that is that result, when those ten or so spectators helped move that boulder, which was a very large loose impediment out Tiger's way, at the time, that seemed like, you know, quite an abusive rules, what seemed wrong, rules should be changed. And it's a good example, because it shows why there is a four-year rules revision cycle to ensure that rules aren't just changed on a whim, and then the next week you realize, gee, that wasn't a very good idea, let's change it back, and in which case, by which point, everybody's confused as to what the rule really is. And it also shows how we should resist changing the rules to address extreme circumstances. And what was interesting is the original version of this decision, and those of you who have older decisions books before nineteen eighty-four, know that the decisions book was frankly a lot more interesting reading back then, had a lot more detail, some of it almost gossipy at times. And the original question came from an RNA decision in the nineteen fifties or early sixties, and it was, and you can't make this up, it was mixed for some of that, and the question was whether two players on the other side could help move a tree branch out of the way. So you just imagine, like, say, a grandmother playing with her grandson, and the grandmother's ball is near this tree branch, what's the harm in having other players help move this tree branch out of the way? In those circumstances, that seems, you know, quite reasonable. Or, you know, and then you start to think, okay, if we were to change the answer to this decision, and play involve a rules change, how would you change the rule? And first, you think, okay, just have it so only the player, his or either of their caddies can move a loose impediment affecting the player's play. So you think, okay, that, that seems reasonable. But then, let's take a case where, let's say, Phil and I are playing, and we're fellow competitors, no caddies, and I have a forty-foot putt. I ask Phil to attend the flagstick. He's a ten, a flagstick for me, and just before I putt, a leaf blows and comes, a large leaf comes to rest one foot in front of the hole. So I look up, and I say, Phil, would you mind removing that leaf? He says, sure. So he picks it up and tosses it aside. Now, that seems pretty harmless, doesn't it? But what if Phil wasn't allowed to do that? What if I had to walk thirty, thirty-nine feet up, move the leaf? What if I had to walk 39 feet up, move the leaf, walk 39 feet back? Wouldn't, first, isn't that a much more common application of this decision? And isn't that kind of a silly result as well? And I know there is a lot of concern with the uniformity of this, and that after the Tiger situation, I think just a few weeks later in a tournament in the Middle East, a player hit his ball into the desert near a smaller rock, and this was during the middle of the day, and there were some spectators there, and they helped him move the rock out of the way. And then later that same round, a player in possibly the last group, and say this was on Thursday, so not a main player, was there, and there were no spectators around, and he and his caddy couldn't move the rock, and he'd hit it to the same spot. And people say, well, that's not fair, for them to get a break just because there were not spectators there. And while that's true, you look at other situations we talked about, with the example of Army's Army, and what comes with having a lot of spectators around you. You know, they can funnel balls back into play, they can shield you from the wind, shield the grain from the wind. On the other hand, there's a lot of noise, a lot of distraction, and so forth, and to try to even all that out, probably just isn't something that rules of golf should try to do. So you just have to accept that there are always going to be certain advantages and disadvantages to what time of day you play, and whether you're in a popular group or not popular group, and there's spectators or not. And one point that's interesting, and it's shown that it was a good move not to do anything with this decision, is there really hasn't been another case that just seems wrong like that, that it bothers people so much. So do you really want to change a pretty fundamental rule to address such a rare circumstance? Probably not. But that's one of the tenets behind moving towards a simpler code of rules, is just to learn to accept the situations that occur, the two extremes of a rule, and say, okay, we've got a good rule here, it covers 99% of the case as well, and we're just, you know, the other 1%, the player might get a great break or a terrible break, and that's okay. And for the sake of simplicity, we're going to accept that. And I think that's one example of that.
In that case, or could not have, the committee declared those to be part of the golf course?
Well, yeah.
As they were, they were placed there for that event.
Well, I think they were just placed there in general for the golf course, just where they play. And now is a question, could, since a committee is allowed to declare, say, hazard stakes to be fixed, be immovable, could they deem a large rock to be immovable? And really, there's nothing in the rules that allows them, allows a committee to deem a loose impediment to be something else. And which is that, how to make the case, well, should there be? But as is that, I think in practice, it's worked out pretty well, and it's just not that big of a deal.
Yeah, listen to Tiger's revisionist history, the story is that the group moved the rock, and it didn't really help them that much, because they moved it the wrong direction.
They didn't move it where he wanted it to.
They moved it where he wanted to, and he said, he didn't have the heart to ask them to move it that way. So he ended up playing on a different side. It really didn't help him that, I don't know.
No, but as I recall, as we showed this video clip for years and years of the PGA-USGA classes, it was on the 13th hole, par five, and he hit a, like a four iron second shot that just went off into a windside bunker, and almost wound up on the green. I think he got up and down from the bunker already. So, I don't know, the fact that he almost hit it on the green, I assume, was still pretty interesting.
Well, it came up again yesterday. They mentioned it yesterday, the fact that he did not want, he did not want it moved where they moved it.
Oh, that's interesting.
I never heard that before either until yesterday, when I was catching what we do on the podcast.
I do have a question, because your answer to Arnold's question somewhat shocked me, and it brought this to mind. And you've played Washington County, and West Bend has a situation where, basically in the construction of the course, they dug up rocks, obviously, and they have made, on several holes, walls of rocks. Is that a different situation where you could, because there are multiple things piled to become something else, and in his case, it's a singular thing?
Yeah, and I think the difference with the stone wall is that once you, man starts piling stones on a wall, that's now become an immovable obstruction, that entire wall. And if the committee also wants to say that that entire wall is an integral part of the course, then they're deeming an immovable obstruction to be an integral part of the course, which they're allowed to do.
And then those rocks that have fallen away from that, do they retain the status of being an immovable obstruction, or in that case, a movable?
Yeah, and that's the type of thing with the rocks that have fallen off the wall is something that ultimately, it's a good idea, well, ideally, one, the committee would put it back, but ideally, the committee should address whether they're going to say that's part of the wall and is a movable obstruction, which I don't think is the way. I'd be more inclined to treat, like, say, a gravel-covered path. But as a whole, a gravel-covered path is an immovable obstruction. But pieces of gravel that have been spit away from it are loose impediments. So that's kind of the way I'd look at it.
Well, in the case of Washington County, there are a lot of large rocks that are along the path and designating adjacent hole, the type thing, which
Oh, okay.
The ball can go in there, and it's still, you know, if you get enough people, you can move it, but they just don't. So to me, they're part of the path.
Well, and then that's one thing, because there can be some cases where, I think you make a case that you take a large boulder, and you, I think it's possible to transform that into an obstruction. You know, to paint, or to put a plaque on there, or chisel something out, and hold 476 yards of whatever, and you'd argue that it's an obstruction, and therefore, treat it as an obstruction, or you could say it's an integral part of the course.
One of our online people would like everyone to know that Tiger Woods smoothed out a 44 on the front nine today.
It's really the back nine.
What?
You've got a chance, you've got a chance.
Wow.
44 on the back nine.
Yeah, he just wrote actually back nine.
That's what it is. I'd be teed up on 10 today.
Yeah, 44 on his first nine.
Well, it's 36, but it's also easy.
Plus eight on that.
All right, Decision 23-1/4, something that comes up a little bit more often than you might think, especially if, say, a large tree branch, a player's ball's behind a tree branch, let's say there aren't enough people to move the branch, or if it's just not worth the effort, and he wants to know, can he just break off part of that branch? And the answer is yes, that's okay. And at first, that doesn't quite seem right, because we're used to thinking, oh, you can't break things. But then if you think that, well, he's allowed to move the entire branch, so why not let him just break off part of it? That's consistent with that. And then Decisions 23-1/6, slash 6.5, slash 7, and slash 8 are ones, good ones to know by officials, and there is actually still a little bit of a question mark, that they don't quite cover everything, but these questions do come up a lot. First, 23-1/6. Through the green, is it permissible for a player to remove loose impediments from the area in which he is preparing to drop his ball? Well, Rule 13-2 does have the area in which you're to drop the ball as a protected area. Is there anything in Rule 13-2 that prohibits improving that area by removing loose impediments? There is not. So by default, that's okay. And this happens an awful lot. A player takes a leaf from a cart path, and wants to tidy up the area in which he's going to drop the ball, and that's okay. Now, let's move on to the next decision. Through the green, the player taking a leaf drops his ball and rolls one to club links. Here he drops, same result. Now he must place the ball as near as possible to where it landed on the second drop. Before he places the ball, may he remove loose impediments on or around the spot on which the ball is to be placed? And the answer is yes. And, you know, that makes sense, because we know he was allowed to remove those loose impediments before he dropped the ball, so it makes sense to allow him to remove loose impediments before he places the ball. So that makes sense. But then the next two decisions, which are similar, take a different tact. And this is, we'll look at just the first one, 23-1/7. A loose impediment, actually, no, let's look at the second one. No, let's look at the first one. A loose impediment affecting a player's lie is moved when the player lifts his ball under rule that requires him to replace the ball. In equity, should the player be required to replace the loose impediment? Answer is yes. If he fails to do so, he incurs a penalty of one stroke in both match play and stroke play. If this happened in a hazard, then he incurs the general penalty of loss of whole in match play or two strokes in stroke play. So first point is, how do they come up with the different penalties? Why through the green should it just be one stroke? Well, because he could have reached that result with a one-stroke penalty. If he had just lifted his ball, well...
Lifted the loose impediment.
Yeah, if he had just removed the loose impediment, exactly. If he had just removed the loose impediment, and that caused the ball to move, then what? One-stroke penalty, replace the ball. So it makes sense that either way, that's a one-stroke penalty for him to play without loose impediment. But if this happened in a hazard, then Rule 13-4 would prohibit the removal of a loose impediment in that case. So he's not allowed to remove the loose impediment. And in this case, what's key is that this is a situation where he is, has lifted the ball and is required to replace it. So both situations, he's lifting, he has lifted it, and he has to replace it. And the one situation that the decisions really don't cover is a situation where a player has moved, or ball has been moved by the player or by someone else, and it must be replaced. Because it makes sense that when the player's in control of the start and the end, that you can't remove loose impediments. You'd add be a way of sort of bending other rules. But how about when, say, a spectator moved his ball, and the player has to replace the ball? Well, let's go through the various scenarios. If the player, if this happened through the green, spectator moves the ball outside agency, Rule 18-1, no penalty, player must replace the ball. If the player knew, as would likely be the case, the player did not know the spot where the ball lay, so how will he replace it? Well, in 20-3C, as we'll see next time, he will drop the ball. So he's dropping the ball. So therefore, given 23-1/6, you have to say, it's okay to remove loose impediments. So it's okay for him to move loose impediments in that case. Should it be okay for him to remove loose impediments even in the rare case where, let's say, the exact location of the ball is known? Probably makes sense to allow that. So could you say, then therefore, that one time you can't remove loose impediments is when the ball has been lifted, not just moved, but lifted, and must be replaced? You know, you probably can. I'm not sure necessarily if that's the official answer, but there is a little bit of a gap here, and I think that will be tightened up shortly, as to what happens when the ball's moved and has to be replaced, and you're replacing by placing. Are you allowed to remove loose impediments? It seems to me that you are able to. Some might have different views. But as an official, that can happen a lot. Any questions on Rule 23 there? All right, well, just a few things before we break. No, there won't be a session next week, because we've gone, be out of town, the USGA's annual meeting. Our next session will be on Thursday, February the 12th, it'll be from 8 to 12. Oh, Phil's got a little cheat sheet. And then from there, on Friday, the 20th, and on Thursday, the 26th, in which case we'll finish all this up. So next week, or rather, in two weeks, we'll start with Rule 20, so very big rule that serious referees need to know thoroughly. And we'll go from 20 to 24, and we'll probably get through 26 or so, we'll see, because we're covering some pretty big rules. So thank you all for that. For those joining us online or watching the replay on YouTube, please let us know how this works, the video and so forth. And also, what we'll do, try to do is, going forward, Gary had sent a good suggestion to Bill about trying to incorporate some kind of review questions into the format, perhaps at the end of each session. And Gary, I'm afraid that didn't happen a day in part, because the rules we covered day are pretty straightforward, and I don't want to sound lazy, but I had trouble thinking up good questions outside of what we discussed. I think next time will be quite different, and I think that is useful, to try to come up with a few questions, might be a little more involved to try to tie together some of the concepts. So we'll do that. So anything else?
Where the answer is, that would be the oldest, in here, or down there?
Either Kenny or Army have a preferred one.
So, all right, well, thank you all very much, and I hope you have a good weekend.
The 20th and the 27th. The next one is the 20th?
Well, 20, 26.
The 12th, Thursday.
20, 12, 20, 27.
We have Thursday, Friday, and Thursday.
Oh, that's a Thursday then.
I'll bring you back your replacement, Mr. Bill.